I'd like to call the meeting to order for May 25th, 2021. And we are all up on the dais, as you can see. So why don't we start with invocation, a moment of silence by Mr. Salazar? Please stand.
Dear God, we invite you to preside over this meeting, even if we have different opinions. Give us unity of spirit. Help us to each listen politely as others share their points of view. Help us to work as a unified team in combining ideas for a great outcome. Help us to work as a whole rather than as individuals trying to promote their own agendas. May we have a spirit of camaraderie in this room and work together on our shared mission. Amen. Please join me in the...
Put allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
God bless America. Thank you, Mr. Salazar. Fire evacuation. We have two exits from the chamber, one to the rear out to the parking lot and one to my left, your right, and left down the back stairs into the rear parking lot. Welcome, Kathy. Could we have roll call, please?
Yes. Mr. Salazar?
Here.
Mrs. Thurston?
Here.
Mr. Ungeyer?
Here.
Mrs. Kuschman?
Here.
Mrs. Hall? Mr. LeBlanc? Mrs. LeBlanc?
Here.
Mr. Ryder?
Here.
Chairman Cruzel?
Here.
Both Ms. Hall and Mr. LeBlanc had previous engagement tonight, so. Number six, board guests. The pause time slash pack time. Mr. Dreszek, would you like to introduce them?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight, we have very special guests with us. And I'm not going to, Amber, I'm going to mispronounce your last name. And I've done it before, you just weren't in the room. Amber and Kelly, both grade two teachers at Hazardville Memorial. And Karen, the grade four teacher at Eli Whitney. They have a presentation for the board about a development called Pause Time, Pack Time. And I'm not going to go into too much details and take away from their presentation. So at this point, I welcome you up to the dais. And also want to welcome Hazardville Memorial Principal,
You'll have the chair over.
Principal Hunter and Assistant Principal Andrew DePere, as well as Assistant Principal from Whitney, Kristen Fitzsimmons.
You could wave.
You can grab the handheld mics and use the one center mic. Make sure that they're on. You can pull the one center one up towards you.
This one? Okay. Okay. Perfect. Thank you. We are so excited to be here tonight to share with you a project that we've been working on for two years, but especially its growth over the last year during the COVID-19 pandemic and what it's meant for our staff at HMS and now Eli Whitney, and also, most importantly, for our students. Pause Time was developed in the spring of 2019. The pause part is in reference to our behavior expectations in our building. Practice kindness, always be safe, make wise choices, and show respect, the things that we expect kids to do every day when they come to HMS. But Pause Time has ended up becoming a lot more than just that to us. Can you go to the, how do I go to the next slide? Just, oh, just click. Okay. So in tonight's presentation, we're excited to share with you how Pause Time got started at Hazardville Memorial and also what it looked like in person before the pandemic and the shift that we made to an all-virtual Pause Time over the last year. We're also excited to share how we've expanded the Pause Time project to include our sister school, Eli Whitney, and our three-to-five students, and also the opportunities that we've given our students for outreach into the Enfields community as a whole and some of the projects that we've worked on between the sister schools. And we'll touch on plans for next year. We all know, probably now more than ever, how important relationships are for kids when they come to school. Kids need healthy relationships with the adults that they work with. Kids need healthy relationships with the peers that are around them. Goal of Pause Time is to increase those relationships and help students feel a sense of community in their school building. We know that students will achieve higher academics and will see a drop in behavior when they feel comfortable with adults and peers around them that know who they are and what they're capable of. The goals of the Pause Time project since its beginning are to enhance students' sense of belonging when they're at HMS, to also improve student achievement and reduce occurrences of negative behavior from our kids, and to support student relationships through hands-on activities that focus on social-emotional learning, giving kids a fun and exciting thing to do, and also emphasizing communication between students and their peers. And above all else, one of the goals of this project has been to not be one more thing for our teachers. So we wanted to do this in a way that didn't give everybody another thing on top of what they already do. This project started with a trial of just our grade-two students in the spring of 2019. So obviously, before COVID was ever even a discussion. We took our grade-two class over that six weeks, and we divided them into small groups of 10 or 11 students per group with 11 or so different staff members. Every Pause Time group leader had a different location to meet in the building. We organized that ahead of time. And students were placed in a small group of peers and with an adult that they weren't with in their regular home classroom on a daily basis. So at 2:30 on Tuesdays, students would leave their existing classroom, go to wherever their Pause Time location was, and participate in an activity with that group. The groups were doing the same activities, but kind of mixing up the personalities that were in there. And let's see, we gave teachers their location, their activities, materials, everything was provided for them. The sessions included games and activities that focused on different learning modalities and also gave an emphasis to social-emotional learning through texts that were available through our school library. Our activities that we did with students during that time focused on teamwork, communication, and self-reflection, and helping students kind of get to know each other and move forward and communicate within a small group setting.
So, is this working? Yeah, okay, good. Thank you. So the response from the students was overwhelmingly very positive. They were so excited to be with friends from other classes they don't get to see on a regular basis. They were starting to build relationships with other teachers. You would see the kids walking through the halls, and they would see their Pause Time teacher, and they'd say, hey, see you at Pause Time. Is it Tuesday? I can't wait for the activity. They were so happy. And what we did is we asked the kids to fill out some feedback for us to see, like, is this working? How are they feeling about it? And would they like this to continue? The kids were so enthusiastic about it. They, you can see some of the feedback behind you. They said that they wish Pause Time was every day. They got to make new friends. And they said that their favorite part was everything. Like, the kids loved every aspect of the Pause Time activities that we were doing. And their reaction to the Pause Time actually leaked over into their behavior in the school overall, which Amber will talk about again.
So in addition to the positive student feedback that we gathered, we also were taking a look at our SWISS behavior data over the six-week trial that we did that spring with just our grade-two students. As you can see, the, our teachers enter any kind of behavior referrals on a regular basis, and we just kind of use that to keep track of patterns in student behavior and put in supports to help them as needed. Prior to this trial, our grade-two students were averaging above 25 behavior entries per week as an entire grade level. Halfway through the trial, that number had dropped to just above 20, and by the end of the trial, they were only averaging 15 entries per week. Pause Time cannot be held responsible for all of that. There's a lot of factors in place, and our teachers do a wonderful job at trying to reduce those behaviors and help kids and give them the support that they need. But it was certainly a factor and a positive one. Because of the success of the trial, we were able to move Pause Time to a school-wide implementation beginning in the fall of 2019, where now it was not only our grade-two class, but our kindergarten first and second graders who were participating at the same time, 2:30 on Tuesdays, every week, starting in October of 2019. We had at that time 31 different groups, same thing again, 10 to 11 kids per group with a different teacher and different peers, mixed grade level, K to 2, than what they're normally with on a day-to-day basis. And it was blocked into all students' schedule and almost all staff members' schedule, as the scheduling would allow. Because of the scope of taking on a project like this, we did a slow rollout in the fall of 2019, where we started with our grade-two students and sending them out to their groups first. If they were, say, going to a specialist as their group leader or a, another grade-two teacher as their group leader, they started off with a very small group of three or four of them and got to do some activities related to being a role model and that kind of thing. If our grade-two students were placed with a kindergarten teacher as their Pause Time group leader, they went down to help out in the classroom. So it rolled out slowly that way, and we were able to add in our first-grade students in November. By the end of December, our entire school was participating in Pause Time, where they would all go to their group and meet with their teacher and their, you know, mixed-grade level peers every Tuesday. So you could see students walking down the hallway with color-coded passes that matched doorways. And if you can imagine, every K to 2 student in Hazardville Memorial moving through the hallways at the same time, it was really quite a feat. But they were very excited to be able to participate in that. I should mention, too, that staff at HMS was wonderful about giving us input on student groupings, so we made sure that groupings were appropriate for students. And students who might not have been able to travel all the way across the building on their own successfully were put in, like, a closer proximity. And during this Pause Time in the fall of 2019, our students participated in the same kind of hands-on activities that our grade-two students did during the trial. Again, materials and lesson plans were provided for our teachers weekly. And we had a lot of positive feedback, both from staff who were extremely committed to the project from the beginning and also from families, hearing their students come home and talk about what they were doing at school. They were very excited to be sharing their Pause Time experience. Most importantly for us, though, there was a visible positive shift in the energy in our building.
Said, if you can imagine seeing 350 kids navigating through the building all at once, we always joke that we wish we had, like, a drone footage of all the kids walking through the school, because they were so excited to just get to their classes. You know, the first graders and the second graders walking independently, the kindergartners walking hand-in-hand down to their group. It was just something so happy to see, and staff were standing at their doors greeting the kids. I mean, everyone believed in this and felt so positive about what we were doing. The connection between the kids themselves and then the kids in their Pause Time leader was incredible. You'd be walking through the school, and all of a sudden, as a staff member, I knew so many more kids, because they were in my Pause Time group, and I got to talk to them and just touch base with them in the hallway, say hi. And the kids were, you know, waving to their buddies as they were walking through the hallway or giving them little fist bumps, again, pre-COVID. And it was just so nice to see those connections being formed. The kids, my kids in the morning, every morning, is it Tuesday? Is Pause Time on our schedule today? And if it was on the schedule, they wanted to know, well, what's our activity for today? And I always built that excitement. You're going to have to wait to see when you get to your Pause Time group, because even though all those activities were planned for every classroom teacher, we also had the flexibility that if we found something on our own that we really wanted to do with them instead, some staff members were saying, okay, I'm going to hold on to this activity for a week, and I'm going to do something else. Or they would put their own spin on it. So kids would come back, and some of my kids would have the same activity, and some would have a different activity. And just staff being able to put their own personal spin, throw in their own personal interests, was really exciting, and the kids loved that as well. And again, you're going to see in the next slide the impact it had on our student data.
Not unlike what we saw with our trial with just our grade-two students, we saw a significant change in the behavior data that was being recorded school-wide. Prior to the project's start, we were averaging over 80 entries into our SWISS system, K to 2. During the rollout, where we were getting grade-two involved first, and then first grade, and then kindergarten, so on, that number dropped a little bit. But once we were in a full school-wide implementation, that number was down to just over 50 behavior recording into our SWISS system per week. So there was that positive data as well. This is a slide that nobody else, nobody ever wants to see again, and I know that. But obviously, closing our school building had a huge impact on all of us for all of the reasons. But on, from a Pause Time perspective, not being there and not being able to build those relationships with our kids probably bothered our staff more than the students at the time. During the closure in the spring, we did some research to try to figure out how to flip Pause Time to a virtual model and ended up coming across Flipgrid as a platform to be able to use for a project like this. Flipgrid is a Microsoft platform, and because all of our students in Enfield have a Microsoft email, it made it kind of an easy transition for them to be able to log on. In the spring of 2020, we obviously didn't have one-to-one devices yet for our kids, but we were still putting out weekly activities over Flipgrid. They were sent out via our HMS Families Newsletter to parents, and those kids were getting on in any way that they could to participate in what, you know, we were putting out there for them every week during the school closure. We were getting an average of 20 to 30 student and staff responses via video every week. And that carried through from April all the way until the end of the year last year. This year, because we had the asynchronous Wednesdays and because students still had a balance of being at home and at school, we opted to use Pause Time on the Wednesday schedule so that all students would be able to access and participate in the same way, because they all follow the same schedule. We put this project out this year as optional for both teachers and students, because this is a crazy year, and we didn't want to give anybody one more thing to do. That said, our staff opted in. 100% of our classrooms have been participating in the project all year. And the way that we've handled it is to send out the activity via Teams to every classroom. The teachers just had to let me know if they wanted their class to be able to participate and see the activity, and I would send it out through, you know, being an owner on everybody's team. Just as in the spring, students and staff participate by submitting videos of whatever activity they're participating in on Flipgrid. And then we go through as a team and activate videos and make sure that they're appropriate to share and that kind of thing. In the beginning of the year, there was also an instructional video provided for families and project information about what we're trying to do here to help with the initial login and give families that support at home. During Pause Time this year, our goal has been to give kids engaging activities that they can do with their family members at home on those asynchronous Wednesdays. We have an interdisciplinary academic focus. We've done everything from data collection to social-emotional learning to STEM activities, art, music. It's all been in there at one point or another this week, or this year. We've also been lucky enough to have read-alouds attached to each activity by our administrators, by our special staff. So our HMS staff has really taken ownership of being a part of something that kids can work on at home during their remote days. On this slide, you can see a sample of one that we did right before April vacation. It was an egg drop challenge, complete with a read-aloud by our administrator, Mrs. Hunter. And students had to find a way to protect their egg from falling and breaking from a very high location. Obviously, the videos that were submitted were extremely cute, and we had kids out of, dropping things out of windows and standing on cars. But the engagement was high, and because they were doing it with their family, it was also very safe. This was especially easy for students to access because they all had those one-to-one devices, and they're all working at the same level on Wednesdays and following that same schedule. This year, on Flipgrid, we began in mid-October. We've averaged about 150 student videos submitted each week with each activity. To date, we have over 3,700 student videos that have been activated and are viewable by our HMS community. But the most important part is that not only do we have that many student videos that have been submitted, those videos, Flipgrid tracks how many times they've been watched. They have been watched over 45,000 times, which means our kids are able to see each other even on their remote days. It's a huge, huge win for us as a staff and, most importantly, for our kids. Flipgrid also tracks hours of engagement. We were at 216 when I last checked. That was last week of total time that kids have spent on the app, participating either recording videos or viewing. And students, because their iPad came with Flipgrid already installed on it as an app, they're able to easily access from school or home and kind of check out each other's videos and participate with each other, even though they can't be with each other in the same room. In addition to just building our school community, we have also participated in a couple community outreach projects. I've created some compilation videos of students' Flipgrids to share with our local community for Veterans Day, for PJ Day for the kids, for our Teacher Appreciation Week in early May, and also compilation videos to share at our monthly school assemblies to get that student engagement piece where we really can't otherwise. And, you know, our normal assemblies, we would get together in the gym, and we'd have student participation, but all of that is out the window this year because of the COVID stuff. This has been a way for students to kind of showcase themselves and see each other during an assembly, even if it's virtual. Some other successes from this year. We've been able to, without planning to, certainly, support students' mental health by keeping them connected with peers and teachers during the remote days and their hybrid schedule. Our students are taking pride in the work that they're doing, even when it's a school day at home. And we know that by looking at their reactions to their videos being featured in our assemblies. Our families are connected to the school, because links to YouTube videos of their kids are going out in our newsletters. And I can't say enough positive things about our staff this year, because they have proven to be the most resilient and flexible people I have ever met. They are willing to try new things, and anything I have said to them this year, I've just been like, hey, you want to try something new? And they're like, yes, absolutely, Amber. Like, just tell us what you need us to do. It has been such a positive experience for our HMS community as a whole. We've also been lucky enough to share some of our success with our sister school, Eli Whitney. We began in March of 2021 with a focus group at Eli Whitney of five classes who got to participate in trying out some of these same activities that we were doing with our HMS kids. We created a Whitney Flipgrid so that they have their own community called Whitney Pack Time, but it mirrors the HMS Flipgrid almost to a T at the moment. After the focus group of about five classrooms, we invited the entire Whitney staff and all of their classes to participate. Again, presented to staff as optional, and again, 100% of Whitney staff has jumped in on this project, because they know that it's something that's positive for their kids. One of the huge benefits is that siblings have been able to participate in the activities together. So families that have siblings in both buildings, they've been doing the same thing and then creating a video for each of their Flipgrids. And we've been able to include read-alouds and videos from both, staffs at both buildings. Whitney Pack Time is currently averaging about 100 videos per week, and they're only four weeks in at the moment. And obviously, we have ongoing communication with our sister-school colleagues at Eli Whitney. Do you want to speak to that?
Yeah, so we recently started, like Amber said, five classes, and then we quickly added the whole staff, and they also were very positive, and the students were positive. It's really nice to see Hazardville's students from last year be able to see their teachers. They love the read-alouds, and they even come up to me and say, oh, I saw my principal from last year. So it's just been a really positive experience for the Whitney students and for just the collaboration piece. I think seeing siblings, which is up there, they get to be with their siblings and do the videos together. And I personally, my students love it. They come in the next day, like, talking about the videos. How many likes did you get on the videos? So overall, it's been very successful at Whitney, and we just thank you guys for including us.
Together, as a sister-school team, we've taken on a couple community projects as well. We were very excited to participate in the Enfield Unplugged Week from Enfield Kite and put together a video that I'll share with you from that in just a minute. We also supported, as sister schools, the Buzz Robotics Food Drive to Support Enfield Food Shelf. And our administrators took all of the cereal boxes that were collected in both buildings, put together a video of a domino run through the hallways of both HMS and Eli Whitney, and we were able to share that video through Pause Time during the activity last week and had students create their own domino run at home to go with it and to kind of celebrate the success of the food drive. The video from Enfield Unplugged is on the next slide, and I'm hoping if I just click play, will it give me sound? I hope so, too.
It's Unplugged Week. You can either play a board game with your family or maybe go out on a picnic with someone. That's just a few things that you can do. And what I'm going to do for Enfield Unplug is I'm going to go outside, read a book, jump in my trampoline, and ride my bike. So I wrote two letters for my friends that I haven't seen in a while. I know we're in a pretty hard time right now, and your parents may not really want to run your video games and stuff. I got some tips for you. Maybe you could do art. Maybe you could play with your pet. Or go chilling in the sun. And you can play outside.
So that's just an example of one of the videos that we've submitted to our local community also. Sorry. As far as what's next for this project, we are currently in discussion with Stowe Early Learning Center, because they are excited to be participating in some of our activities as well. In talks with Jaclyn and Brianna Beckstrand with Kite, we're working on, starting next week, creating welcome videos for our incoming pre-K kids into kindergarten and kind of stretching out that way to be able to involve our pre-K that way. And also, we're talking about some family engagement activities that we can use Flipgrid for to help them participate in Pause Time and Pack Time. We are beginning plans for next year. Obviously, we're continuing our collaboration with Eli Whitney. That's a given. We're working on, hopefully, scheduling Pause Time and Pack Time to be in-person activities that occur at the same time, giving us the potential to create primary and intermediate buddy classrooms over teams. So just some of the things that we've been talking about. And Pause Time at HMS will also be supporting the committee work of the Academic and Social Support Grant at HMS. We will continue to be flexible. Obviously, we've seen success of Pause Time pre-COVID, being able to mix cohorts of kids and that kind of thing. We've seen success in a virtual model using Flipgrid. We have no idea what the fall is going to look like, but we are committed to finding a way to continue this project, because it's been a huge success for our kids and for our staff. Thank you so very much for having us tonight. We really are excited to share this with you and appreciate your time.
How about a round of applause? Anybody want to start? Mr. Blank?
Hello. Thank you for your presentation. I loved everything about it. And when you were talking about the development and why you started the program, there were so many things you didn't say. Like, what I was thinking is how this will help boost the confidence and empower kids to go into these new situations with different kids that are not in the classroom. And you know even how hard that is as an adult. So if we're continuing to do this when they're younger, maybe it's something they're a little bit more comfortable in. Also, you know, for the younger kids, they're going to meet other teachers. So they may be in that teacher's class next year with some friends from that group, because they weren't in their current kindergarten class. So I feel like the benefits you focused on were amazing. And then there's all these other little benefits that circle around it for the kids. And I'm a huge fan of peer support. I just, I love that. And I wasn't sure how that was going to be. I just, I love that, and I wasn't sure how that was going to work, like, way back when we went from K through 2 to 3 through 5, because you remember the sixth graders were the line leaders, and they loved doing that kind of stuff, and they helped in the office. So I love to see that at the younger age, and I love the collaboration between the sister schools because the kids that move up from Hazardville are going to fall right into this at Eli Whitney, and then again, they're going to have a sense of familiarity, you know, even just through the partnership. I was chuckling to myself, though, because when I found out Eli Whitney was involved, I'm like, I wonder if Mr. Ryder is in the background of any videos, because this is right up your alley. The other thing I loved were some of the projects you did and the fact that because we have the one-to-one device, it looked like, you know, for the egg drop, you were pretty much using whatever you had around your house, and it didn't have to be, you know, fancy-dancy. And some kids get really creative. And I remember when my kids went to Stowe, they did an annual egg drop for the sixth graders, and that was exciting. And I know, as a family, like you said, so many people in that family got involved in that, in that making. So I just really love this. And I know you said we don't know what the fall's going to look like, but you guys accomplished this during the worst of it. So I have faith that no matter what this fall brings, it's probably a lot better than what we faced. So I think that's all I have. But I just, thank you. It was a great presentation. I can tell you're excited about it, and these are the things that, you know, make Enfield Public Schools amazing. So thank you.
Mr. Ryder.
So I got excited when I knew that you guys were coming to visit us today. And two of the three lovely adults at this table are teachers of my children. So thank you, Kelly and Karen. I think this is great. I saw this in its early inception. My son is in fourth grade, so when he was a second grader at Hazardville, this was just rolling out, more of a PBIS, an acronym, you know. It didn't reach all the tentacles that you guys have created and made this become, where before, like I said, it was just, you know, positive, accountable, caring, and kind. But now it's so much bigger than, pack means more than that at Whitney, and pause means more than that at Hazardville. And in conjunction with this and the addition of our vice principals, the behavioral issues at the schools, as you pointed out, have diminished. They have not gone away. There'll be some challenges in the fall, and we get some friends back that have been And I just think that doing this, especially at this young age, is so important, and I just wanted to thank you guys for that. So everybody, including our friends in the back, Mrs. Hunter, Mrs. DuPere, thank you guys.
Mr. Wonga.
I want to start by saying congratulations, well done. I can see the value in the, in the goals of having the students develop relationships outside of their immediate class, and great value in that, getting them to know as many people as they can. Just a couple of questions about the logistics of the program. So you have, you have these hands-on activities. So who developed, who developed the hands-on activities, and what are they?
So for, so for when we were in person, there's a team of us, and, you know, Kelly and I exchanged ideas a lot. But a lot of times, we're looking for STEM-related activities that go along with things that are happening either in our school community or our greater community at the time. You saw a picture from, like, with a football kind of mat in front of them. They had to build a goalpost. It was right before Super Bowl Sunday. So it's like trying to tie in things that are happening in kids' lives to things that they can come in and do in a small peer group.
Okay, all right. And, and so are the activities designed to promote interaction?
Yeah.
Okay. And then, secondly, how do you, how do you rearrange the students so they're not with the same people all the time? How do you do that?
So their pause time group stays the same and consistent from when they first enter, when it starts through the year. So they're not constantly switching groups, they're staying with that same adult. So they've got their classroom teacher that they have a relationship with, and then also this other adult. But it's just the two, like, we're not changing the adults on them all the time.
Excellent. Thank you.
Mr. Ryder, go ahead.
No, I just wanted to remind the board, if you look at the email that Amber sent us on May 3rd, she has examples of some of the other Flipgrids that they've done, too. Just, just want to mention that. Thank you for sending us that. And everything that you've sent, I've put on Enfield PTO, and we've shared it with families even that don't have Teams. They've been able to see these things. It's been great. Thank you.
Ms. Kuschman.
I could certainly echo everything that's been said so far. We really appreciate getting to see. You know, I mean, I did see your email, and I went on Flipgrid and got to enjoy some of the videos, and they're so fun and funny, just to see the kids bringing their pets on with them on, you know, the camera. It's really just very cute. But it was really neat to see what it looked like before COVID, you know, to see the interactions in the classrooms like that. That was really exciting, and I think, like you were saying, one of the highlight, like, what I would think of is that interaction between the three grade levels, you know, that they get to interact, older students being the mentors to the younger ones, and what a lot of such positive things coming out of it. What a great idea.
Thank you. Mr. Salazar.
Most definitely. Thank you for the work that you're doing, and I have to echo everybody's sentiments up here. But I do want to say that the, the level of creativity, right, that you've demonstrated, the enthusiasm, it's contagious, obviously, and it has been for the kids. It, you know, I've been, I've been a witness in our school district about how important it is for kids to feel that they have a relationship at school, something that binds them to the school, aside from just knowing kids in their classroom. And sometimes, they don't actually make friendships with the kids in the classroom, right? They, they know who they are, but for whatever reason, they feel like they're not a part of that group. And it seems like this pause, you know, activity provides them with that closeness and kind of, not forces them, that's not the word I want to use, but entices them to, to participate. And hopefully, that will in fact open the doors for creating those friendships. So very familiar with how important that is, and I can't thank you enough. I think the program, everything that you've highlighted here is great, and, you know, job well done. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? So I just want to acknowledge the three there in the back. Please stand up and, and take, and take a bow, too. No, it starts from leadership on down, so. But like, like the, like the rest of the board said, thank you for what you guys do. This is above and beyond your, what, you know, what we're expecting, but it's, what I always say, I always have faith in our staff, and you guys just proved it. It's just, it's phenomenal what we do for our kids, and it's, and it all starts with you teachers. So thank you very much. And thank you back there, too. Oh, anytime. So we move to number seven, Superintendent's Report. Mr. Dreszek.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. With the proof for the nine of you, but I know we don't have a full slate today, is people are actually watching, because the day we announced that we were going to start bringing board guests back, the next morning, Andy and I had a message from Principal Hunter saying, I have your first guest. And now you know why. So we couldn't get him at the first meeting, but I want to thank everyone from, well, they're leaving. Good for them. But thank them for, and this is not something that we asked them to do or that the administration said, let's come up with something creative. This was all done by the folks you saw here today. So as you can see, our kids are in very good hands. Keeping with my promise that our Superintendent's Report will be much shorter these days, some of you may have been hearing about reopening plans. There was some questions about what the fall is going to look like. We still don't know at this point in time exactly what the restrictions are going to, or if there will be restrictions in place for next year. We anticipate getting some further clarification from the state either later on this week or early next week. But right now, we're told to continue to plan as if things are the way they are now with the anticipation that they will change. The one thing that is going to change is we have to submit a school reopening plan, and we'll solicit feedback from the community on that plan. And we plan to do that, obviously, virtually. So we'll post the plan on our website, and we'll have a designated email address for people to share their feelings on it. I have not, some districts are starting to put them up. I've made a decision to hold off until I know what the rules are, because I don't want to reinvent the wheel twice. For instance, will social distancing still be required next year? That obviously will have an effect on how we design classrooms next year. I know there's a lot of questions on masks. We just don't have answers at this point, but we're hoping to get those in the coming weeks and start having an idea about what the classrooms are going to look like next year. That said, I just wanted to bring one thing to the board's attention, and some of you may have heard this because you have children in that school. We do have to start planning, especially for our larger schools, in particular, Enfield High School for next year, with the understanding that if the current restrictions are still in place, or the current mitigation strategies are still in place, we do have to alter some operation of the school building, because we do anticipate come September, we're going to have 1,600 kids back in that school, where for the majority of this year, we haven't. Even when we did open it up to four days a week, a lot of students chose to remain remote. So because of that, nothing, there's no wholesale major changes happening to the school, but we did have to tweak the schedule a bit. Eagle block is not going away. It's just being shifted. Essentially, it's being shifted away from the lunch period. Seniors, you're still having senior privileges, don't worry about any of that. But one of the challenges that we're facing with if these, if these mitigation strategies are still in place next year is how do we serve the entire school lunch? So we are going to have to go back to those traditional lunch waves just based on the space needs, and I don't think we'll have an answer in time to put the appropriate planning in place for that. So the high school is going to be communicating that out to students and families in the coming days, but I thought it was a good opportunity to at least put it out there for the board to know in case you guys were to get questions. But I have faith that the high school will roll that out appropriately for, for parents and students. And the last, I know you probably still get questions about graduation. The formal announcement about Enfield High School graduation is going to come from Mr. Fenton in the coming days, if not the beginning of next week. But what I can confirm is that we still anticipate of having an in-person, live graduation at Enfield High School. It will be outdoors. There will be guests permitted. Right now, it's a question of how many guests that we're permitted to have. And as you guys have seen what's happened in, at least statewide, with the recent mandates being lifted, we certainly want to take advantage of that and make the ceremony as close to 2019 as humanly possible, but as safely as possible. So final decisions on that will be happening in the next week or so, and that, that notification will come directly from the administration in Enfield High School. But we do anticipate, and I said this before, and I'm sticking to it, those kids are walking down that hill, and if it's raining on the 22nd, mark your calendars for the 23rd. We're going to wait it out until we get a good enough rain day. And as I'm often reminded, I, with my new nickname, if it means we have to do it in a little drizzle, we're going. But those kids are walking down that hill. So that, and lastly, Enfield Public Schools and Office will be closed on Monday, May 31st, an observation of Memorial Day, and school will resume regular school hours on Tuesday, June 2nd. And that concludes the Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Dreszek. Audiences, anyone want to speak? I declare public communications. Audience is closed. Board member comments. Mr. Salazar, would you like to start?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I actually have a question, and you touched upon it on you, Mr. Dreszek, as you were giving your, your report. But can you please, for the benefit of anybody out there watching, and I hope some people are, because I've received communications requesting information regarding the mask policy currently, can you, can you be more, I don't know, explicit, specific regarding what the mandate is for the masks and where does it originate from?
So that originates with the State Department of Health and the State Department of Education. And although there are mask restrictions that have been lifted, case in point, this room this evening, for people who are fully vaccinated, are no longer required to wear masks indoors, it was still under the guidance of the State Department of Ed and the Department of Public Health for the remainder of this school year, that schools continue to enforce the mask, the wearing of masks inside public school buildings, even for teachers who are vaccinated as well. And the reason, the rationale behind that was because of the ages of students and the probability that some haven't been vaccinated, that they, they asked us for the remainder of this year to keep our mask enforcement in play. We don't have any direction at this point as to what the fall is going to look like, although we anticipate that may change. I don't want to include, you know, my instinct on a document until I get further clarification from that on the state, but that we have been directed that for the remainder of this school year, while operating schools indoors, the mask mandate should stay in place until June 30th of this year.
I assume, as a follow-up, I assume that if there's any change to that mandate, that would have to come from the state as well, correct?
Correct. Right now, we're still working under the governance of those state bodies.
Well, thank you very much for that. Now, I thought it was useful, and hopefully it'll be helpful to, again, some of the audience. And I've been receiving communication about people trying to understand why it is that this body hasn't changed that. And, you know, my response obviously has been that it is in fact not up to this body to, to do that, but I think it'd be very useful to have them hear it from you as well. So thanks again. I don't have any additional comments, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Salazar. Ms. Kuschman, you have any comments? No comments? Mr. Wonga, you have any comments?
Just one. I had the opportunity to attend a curriculum meeting, the first time I'd attended a curriculum meeting, so I thought that was interesting. And I also want to welcome Kathy Zalecki back in person. Nice to have you here.
Who wants to start on this side? Ms. Blank.
Okay, just a couple things. I actually had a question, the same question as Bill regarding the masks. I'd gotten a few people, you know, inquiring, you know, why the kids were still wearing masks, and my inclination was that it was the DPH. I didn't really think it was going to be the State Department of Ed or the CDC adding a caveat saying what they're, we're lifting this, but not for this population. So thank you for clarifying that. I think when you say you're going to wait for what the reopening plan is for the fall, I think that's extremely smart, because we saw how much the state changed the reopening plans for this fall, and they changed weekly. And I think that, I really think that's a good idea, because we don't want to have to keep giving out information and changing information, and something gets lost in transition because families might start traveling again and take summer vacations, so. And they may not be watching us closely because everything is, you know, falling back to the norm. So I fully support you waiting on that. I've also been getting a lot of questions about the live stream for graduation, so I'm assuming that's going to come from Mr. Fenton when he sends out the announcement, how the live stream will work and all that fun stuff. So the other thing is I have some SafeGrad announcements. So SafeGrad is wrapping up, and they would like everyone to know that tomorrow, Wednesday, May 26th, there's a fundraiser at Collins Creamery. It's all day. Just tell them you're there to support the 2021 Enfield SafeGrad. And then on Saturday, if you're doing some spring cleaning, they're having a clothing and bedding drive this Saturday from 10 to 1:00 in the EHS parking lot. They'll accept clothes, bedding, pillows, and stuffed animals. And this is a very important one, they wanted me to stress tonight. Seniors and senior parents, fill out your SafeGrad form by June 4th. That's a Friday. Nobody will be allowed in without the forms turned in on time, and blank forms are in Mr. Murray's office, and that is also where you'll, you'll fill out the completed forms. And I think, I think that's it. I have June 9th written down. I can't remember why. That's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Thurston.
Just a reminder, the test of the town is Friday, June 4th, from 6:30 to 10:30, and that you can get your tickets at erfcinc.org. And Mr. Dreszek again is the master of ceremonies. But I do have a question, if I can.
Please.
Summer schools, I was just sent a text, do we know where summer schools are going to be?
I can't tell you right now, because some people don't know, but yes. In all honesty, in all transparency, JFK and Enfield High Summer School take, is going to take place at Enfield High School. Obviously, JFK is under construction. We, we're trying to come up with one central location for all of our K5 summer school programs, and right now, we are in, we've actually, and this might be a good opening to encourage anyone who may be watching, and before you start saying, well, I can't believe people don't want to do it, you have to understand, and you can see, our teachers have been through quite a lot in the last 15 months. So when I made a declaration last week that please, if you're interested in teaching summer school, apply or let us know. So we did make a little bit of a shift from a staffing perspective. Instead of doing a six-week period, we've broken the shifts down to, to three two-week sessions, so that way, if a teacher can only do two weeks, you know, we'll take it. We're still a little short on staffing. That's why there isn't a formal announcement coming out, but it will be coming in the, in the coming days. And we're also trying to partner to make the, the transportation and the alternative programming a little bit easier for families as well.
I remembered what June 9th was.
Go ahead, please.
Okay, so June 9th is a parent, the Okay, so June 9th is apparent, the junior parents are going to have their first SafeGrad meeting at 7 o'clock in front of Enfield High School. But if you're interested in helping send the students off to Sunny's Place the night of graduation, you can meet on June 9th as well at 6:30 in front of Enfield High School. So that's what my June 9th note was.
Mr. Ryder.
So that's for the class of 22. Yes, okay. I have a couple of updates from my Hazardville and Eli Whitney friends that were here earlier. Again, thank you guys for everything you presented to us. That was amazing. They have community days coming up on Friday, June 11th at both schools. Monday and Tuesday, June 14th and 15th, our last two in-person days for all schools except JFK are early release days with lunch. The kids will get a packet ahead of time to work on because they'll be turning in their iPads before that. And speaking of that, there are material collections, dates and times for both schools, and I assume all the schools, but I know specifically that Whitney and Hazardville communicated that through their principal's updates, Mrs. Hunter on Monday, and Eli Whitney on Friday. They're both posted on enfieldpto.com/hms or slash Eli Whitney. If you didn't see that email, you can just go there. HMS is also looking for some parent volunteers for a night on June 3rd at 6:30. Please contact Mrs. Hunter. Shoot Mrs. Hunter an email or call the school if you're available to help with something. They need some parent volunteers for. Also wanted to congratulate all of our first readers. Last night, there was a great ceremony. Mrs. Riley helped put that together over at Asnuntuk. So thank you to, to her for that. And also thank you and congratulations to all of our first readers, primarily at the K2 schools, but not everyone. So I wanted to congratulate everybody from last night at Asnuntuk. I also wanted to thank the HMS and Eli Whitney families for the donation of the cereal boxes that they referenced in the video earlier today. That was included in a larger food drive organized from Buzz Robotics. The cereal piece was done specifically at Whitney and Hazardville and the cereal Domino's was, was great. Those videos are also on enfieldpto.com if you want to look at that. Really well done. Also, Eli Whitney is in need of shirts. Any gently used clean t-shirts are going to be cut up and woven into jump ropes for field day on Friday, June 11th. Students will be braiding the strips together as one of their field day events. Shirts will be collected up until this Friday, I'm sorry, next Friday, June 5th. So if anyone would like to donate any gently used t-shirts, they can be dropped off at Eli Whitney. So thank you everybody for that. I was going to ask Mrs. Hunter before she left if I could get the new HMS logo because I don't have that up. I have a different paw print. Also wanted to acknowledge that this is the one-year anniversary of the death of George Floyd. And if you were not personally affected by that, you were certainly directly or indirectly impacted by that and by everything that's been going on in our country for the last year. And the reason that all lives matter is because Black Lives Matter. And I, I just wanted to acknowledge that on this one-year anniversary that we've come very far in a short period of time, but there's a lot of work to be done. And I look forward to being a part of that work with the equity work that we'll be doing, both as a board and as a district. And our piece of that will start next week on June 1st, our first meeting. So I'm glad that's moving forward. The only other question that I had through the chair to the superintendent, just something to keep in mind for anybody moving up to a new school. I know that we talked about maybe like a Flipgrid video for incoming third graders. If that's something that we could communicate to all the admins, I'm sure they're already thinking about it. I just wanted to ask because I've been asked specifically fifth graders. We have three different schools of fifth graders that are going to be going into JFK and that's kind of the first school where we go to the big school and we're all put together for the first time. So if we could maybe brainstorm with Dr. Barrio some sort of video presentation, and I know whatever video we shoot today and show them might not be the same in the fall because there's going to be construction going on, but just, just something I wanted to bounce off you. And thank you for everything. And that's all for this week. Thank you.
Thank you. So I wanted to add on the first readers thing. I was there last night direct in traffic and I was between baseball or first readers. So I kept doing this and this. But anyway, it went off great. It was nice to see everyone there. And Mrs. Hunter also was there. I did see her show up with, with her school was, was there. So thank you for that. Could I have the picture, please? So that is our new tree over at Whitney, which see, I know something about Whitney that Mr. Ryder doesn't know. That is our, the new tree that building underground planted to replace the one that was cut in half. So, and it, as I, that's as of today, so it's still there. So we, they've already got the camera put on it. So we, so we have videoed for it.
They have the camera?
Yes.
They're saying like a little fence?
The camera was just a little bit off. So they just tilted it just a little bit to, to keep an eye on it. So, and I will bring updates on that tree. That's, yeah. Unbelievable. That's all I have to say. Unbelievable. I do want to, I had a person come up to, my wife and I at a, at one of the local restaurants who sent two of their kids through the, the vaccine clinic over at the, the annex. And she was very appreciative that we did that for them and, and she liked that, the way it was set up. And so just reminds me that anyone, the clinic's still there. It's still open. It's just, at this point, it's walk-in. You don't even need appointments. Get over there and get vaccinated. The more, the more we can vaccinate, the more we can get together, just like this meeting and, and hopefully get masks out of schools too. So, and that's all I have. Anyone else? You want to add, Mr. Ryder?
I just wanted to add related to the clinic, because my 13-year-old went there for her first shot. So if anybody goes to the walk-in clinic at the annex, by the end of this month for their first shot, 12 and up, you're guaranteed to get your second shot there as well because it won't be open forever. But if you, if you do go this month for your shot number one, you'll be guaranteed for an appointment at the annex, same, same spot, three weeks later, whichever vaccine you're getting, to get your second dose at the same location.
And when is our second shot's next Wednesday, right?
June 2nd, yes.
June 2nd, yes.
And any student that got it on that schedule will be fully vaccinated, particularly by June 22nd.
Perfect. Okay, anything else? So moving on, we have unfinished business. We have none. New business, celebrity A, approval of 2020, 2021 Lester J. Bodley Scholarship recipients. So in accordance with the scholarship trust, we have two recipients and we're going to refer them as Student A and Student B. And we need a motion to accept these two recipients.
Motion.
Motion by Ms. LeBlanc.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Thurston. And these are two, by the, by the trust of Lester J. Bodley, these were a male and a female that, where's the, hold on a second. Male and female student in the Enfield High School senior class that were well-rounded, college-bound, and have demonstrated leadership skills throughout their high school career. And we're referring to them as Student A and Student B at this time. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Salazar.
Four.
Mrs. Thurston.
Yes.
Mr. Ungay.
Yes.
Mrs. Kuschman.
Yes.
Mrs. LeBlanc.
Yes.
Mr. Ryder.
Yes.
Chairman Cruzel.
Yes.
Motion passes.
And just so you know, this was speculated by, by the, by the trust that the school picks the students and we approve them. So just going what we've done every year. So, thank you. 11B, approval of East Windsor High School, class of 2020, no, sorry, Enfield High School, class of 2021.
That's all right.
SafeGrad contribution. I was at a wake yesterday and that's where East Windsor came from. So I apologize. Enfield High School, class of 2021, SafeGrad contribution.
The SafeGrad folks are going, what?
Yeah.
East Windsor's going, yay!
No, 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 no. My apologies.
Oh.
I'll make a motion.
Make a motion by Ms. LeBlanc.
Second.
Secuted by Mr. Ungay. And correct me, it's a $1,000 donation?
Yes.
Yes, it is. Any other discussion? Going to Enfield High School? And a roll call, please.
Mr. Salazar.
Four.
Mrs. Thurston.
Yes.
Mr. Ungay.
Yes.
Mrs. Kuschman.
Yes.
Mrs. LeBlanc.
Yes.
Mr. Ryder.
Yes.
Chairman Cruzel.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Number 12, board committee reports. Curriculum, who wants to, who wants to fill in for curriculum?
Well, I'm the other member of curriculum, but I was not at that last meeting. So, and Jonathan, who chairs the committee, is not here this evening.
Okay. Well, then, well, you were there. So go ahead and fill in.
I, no, I was there as a guest.
Okay.
I was an observer.
It was good.
So, yeah, you were there, Stacy. I'm sorry. Turn your mic on and say it was good.
It was really, really good. No, I'm trying to, I'm trying to find the classes that they're going to, the EMT.
Turn your mic on. They can hear you here, but they can't hear you on TV.
I'm okay with that. I have to, I have to find it. Come back to me.
All right. I'll come back to you. Okay. Finance, Mr. Ungay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We had no regularly scheduled finance meetings between our last meeting and this meeting. We do have our next finance meeting scheduled for June 14.
June 14, yes. Policy, Mr. Salazar.
There are no meetings scheduled as of now.
Okay.
And I'll, I'll repeat, we have completed the review of all the policies that were recommended. So at this point in time, there are no other policies to work on.
Leadership hasn't met since, but I think we need to have a leadership. We'll talk about it after our meeting. Joint facilities is meeting this Thursday. And again, working on the, the two roofs for the Hazardville Memorial and Eli Whitney. JFK has not met since the beginning of June and work is progressing that I, whatever I see. Joint security.
We meet June 3rd as far as I know.
Okay. Joint insurance also hasn't met and there's no meeting planned. Youth Mental Health and Wellness Advisory, Mr. LeBlanc is not here. And would you like to, are you ready to go for curriculum?
All right. Let me see if I can do this. So right now they offer an EMT course for three years and it's a two-credit course. What they want to do, and you were there too, so you're not getting out of this one. What they want to do is have the opportunity to add an emergency medical responder certificate in addition to the EMT course. And this way it'll give, I think what, they'll do the EMT, the EMT first? No.
I know. It actually provided a means because I believe it's two years because I think they give preference to, or no, two semesters it might be. But they were finding that students, and it's worth two credits. And so they were finding that students that had committed to doing it, but then as they got halfway through.
It wasn't like their thing.
And they realized, this is not what I want. Then they're losing out on those two credits. So having the EMR component gives them an opportunity to just do the half of it if they happen to decide that it's not for them, but they don't lose out on both credits. They still get the one credit.
Correct. See, that's what it was.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Number 13, approval of minutes, regular board of ed meeting minutes, May 11th, 2021.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Blank.
Second.
Secuted by Ms. Thurston. Any discussions or changes? All in favor? We have seven in favor, none against. Approval accounts and payroll? We have none. That's you. Okay. Correspondents or communications?
Yes, please. I have correspondence and communication for our board members. You are cordially invited to the Enfield Adult Education Graduation Thursday, June 3rd at 6:00 PM at the Enfield Annex on North Maple Street. And there will be a reception to immediately follow. I also want to make sure, because I had the wrong date written, that the clothing drive is this Saturday, or I'm sorry, is Saturday, June 5th from 10 to 1:00 at Enfield High. So that's all I have.
Executive session, we have none. Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Miss, by Ms. Thurston, seconded by Ms. Kuschman. All in favor? We are adjourned. Thank you very much and have a good night.